All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
We'll call the meeting to Libber County Board of Commissioners to order. Mr. Brown, has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, it certainly has.
Thank you, sir. I don't see anyone from the ministerial line, so we come in your way again, my brother. We will stand and have Mr. Moses lead us in our prayer.
Mr. Chairman, before I proceed, I was told that the day is very special, and I was told to say happy birthday to you today.
It is a special day.
Y'all join with me saying happy birthday? I don't sing very well. Do you have singers in here? All right, happy birthday. One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, God bless you. Happy birthday to you. I'm trying to bet the loop.
You gonna tell us how old you are?
Think you know.
Let's pray. Gracious God, we thank you for this beautiful day and your boundless blessings. We ask that you would be with this liberty body as they deliberate on business of this community. We pray that you give them the wisdom and insight that they need, Father God, to engage in this business. We pray for those, Father God, who are going through struggles and strains from various diseases and temptations. And, Father God, from this COVID-19, we pray that you be with them. And, Father God, we pray that you continue to be with our soldiers as they protect us and our country. This we thank you for. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Led your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir, and thank you all for the birthday greetings. It's been a good day. One of the blessings was this morning about nine o'clock, my ninety, possibly ninety-year-old mother calls to have a birthday. That's a blessing by itself, so.
It is.
Blessing by itself, so, thank you. All right, the minutes for August, if there need to be approved. Have you had time to look over those?
Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the minutes.
Second.
Motion second, we approve the August minutes as presented. Any further discussion? If you've been all in favor, by show of hands, please. Let me tell the listening and watching audience that Commissioner Gillis is stuck in traffic in Vidalia, stuck at a meeting in Vidalia. Commissioner Jones possibly be here, possibly not. Commissioner Frazier had a, there was a death, one of his friends passed away, so he wouldn't be here today. All right, new business resolution, resolution, excuse me, development zone development agreements. Mr. Kelly Davis.
Evening, everybody. Happy birthday, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
This matter's been discussed, I think, at prior meetings, but as you know, there are a lot of development opportunities and challenges on the east end of our county, specifically in the area in the immediate vicinity of the I-95 interchange. And due to the impact of a lot of these commercial and residential industrial developments primarily, substantial roadway improvements are going to be needed to accommodate the increased traffic to provide for the public safety. And so before the development gets a little too far beyond our reach, it's thought that we, it was appropriate to conduct a public safety and traffic study as well as land use study to determine whether or not the current development is consistent with our land use plan or future uses, as well as to ensure that development impacts don't overburden our infrastructure. And so the resolution you have in front of you, one of the ones for you, the one addressing the Island's Highway Development Corridor, it provides for a study of the issues I just mentioned. And given the scope of the study, I think our planning commission and others estimated it would take about six months or 180 days to undertake and to complete. And so this resolution authorizes the study, authorizes Jeff Ricketson and his office together with, you know, whatever consultants and engineers and other professionals he may think are necessary to undertake the study that our earlier referenced, and then to present it to the commission so that you folks can make informed decisions regarding future growth of the east end, as well as more appropriately planned for public safety and, in particular, transportation needs, given the impact of that development. And so unless you have any questions, first resolution does exactly what I mentioned. It accomplishes this, this public safety, authorizes this public safety and land use plan, as well as suspends development review and approval of industrial and commercial development outside the immediate area of I-95. In other words, it basically kind of takes a snapshot of what we expect ongoing and proposed development, both industrial and commercial, to look like in the next six months, allows that to go through, subject to county review and approval of rezonings and building permits, all the other reviews that the county undertakes. But any property outside that area, reviews for that are suspended pending completion of the study. And then, once you have a new land use plan and can perhaps impose additional conditions on development beyond that immediate area of I-95, then development can resume. But I think everyone's familiar with the area I'm referencing, but it's attached as an Exhibit A to your, to your resolution. And hopefully, your, your Exhibit A depicts the development area a little bit better than mine does. But it's the blue, is yours color coded?
Black and white.
Oh.
No?
It didn't show up on the, there's some that are color coded right there.
All right, now we got it.
But this is, this is.
On our monitor, Joey.
This map depicts the area.
The monitor has it.
Yeah, we got it now.
IT came through.
Are you showing on your all screens?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess the audience can't see.
I think this, this area has been discussed before, but it generally depicts the area in immediate proximity of the I-95 interchange and the Trade Port East Industrial Park or Business Center. And most of that property, much of that property shown here is property within the business park, the Trade Port East Business Center. But you have, I think as you folks are well aware, developments on the south side of Island's Highway, which is, rezoning has already been approved for some of those, consisting primarily of commercial and distribution facilities. Then you have additional parcels behind the industrial park, which are proposed for industrial development as well. And then you have some additional commercial development, probably mixed use, but definitely commercial development on the north side of Island's Highway. And then further down on both the north and east, most of that's the industrial park. But you do have one piece of property, I think that's owned by a New York concern that's immediately adjacent to the industrial park on the north, on the north side. And then you have additional properties to the south side, all of which, right now, are proposed for commercial or industrial use. And I think, I think commission's already been briefed almost all of those. But everything, again, within this area will be allowed to proceed with, you know, normal development, subject to county's approval of rezonings and building permits and all the other review it undertakes. But area east of 95, beyond that development area, that will be suspended until completion of the, of the land use and public safety transportation study. With the exception of single-family residential development, that will be allowed to continue east of 95 regardless. Again, most of the impact that the county is concerned with, particularly with respect to sprawl further down Island's Highway, is mainly commercial and industrial uses. But that is the first resolution, authorization of the study that I mentioned, as well as suspension of review of industrial and commercial developments beyond that, that development area that's depicted on the, on the resolution. And if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions, Mr. Davis?
We, we, you had a key word in there, funding. So what we're, what we're anticipating is funding from the, some of those folks that may be coming in that park for roadway improvement, lighting, or whatever, Mr. Chairman. Is that?
Yes, sir, and that, that'll be the purpose of the second resolution.
Second resolution.
And the, and the reason they're being presented at once is because they are kind of companion resolutions. The first just talks about, addresses the concerns you folks have, makes sure appropriate planning is undertaken. And the second resolution, we'll get to in just a second, discusses, in part, funding those improvements. Yes, sir.
We need to do these separately, or?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Might as well take them one by one.
Yeah, and to make sure I understand this. On this one, the one you just read.
Mm-hmm.
This one is for us to proceed or to make sure that we want to do this? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir, it's to authorize the study, first and foremost. And until that study is completed, we basically have contained the sprawl of commercial industrial development down I, down Island's Highway, but we have allowed the development within the development zone that I just identified. And that's been, that's been determined, not only in, based on our own knowledge and assessments of proposed projects and the impact they're going to have, but we've consulted with area stakeholders, area landholders as well, and gotten the best idea that we could of imminent development in that area, proposed development. Some of it made, obviously, all this land will not be developed within six months, but there are some projects either will be sold or developed or efforts will be made to develop those within the six-month period, most likely.
So for those already coming down the pipeline, this will not, this will not affect them?
No, because I think the board, everyone agrees, we want to encourage responsible and sustainable development in, in the county. And hopefully, limiting this development area at this time will ensure that, until such time as we have, an appropriate study to determine future land use and what appropriate future infrastructure improvements are needed. That's first resolution, authorizes the study and limits the sprawl of industrial and commercial until such time as we have ready for it.
Okay, got one more question on this, and I'll wait till we get to the next one. Within this study, who will be authorized to participate?
That's left up to the planning commission, but I'm sure, like all of these, these studies, they'll, it will involve the area stakeholders, and they'll, they'll solicit the participation of, of all the landowners involved. And today, everyone has participated, I think, very nicely. And so I don't expect any difference with, with the study. But everyone, everyone who's interested. I'm sure we might have a public hearing or two, public meeting, publicly invited, and we'll entertain all comments and suggestions.
I mean, I, I hear you saying landowners, but I guess what I'm looking for is agencies that will be able to participate within the study to make sure we're going in the right direction.
Yeah, I can't speak to the planning commission, but I know in the past, their, their intent is to involve as many people as possible and get full input and feedback to ensure that it's the best thing for our entire community and not limited to any particular landowners or agencies or other stakeholders. In other words, I think they intend to cast a broad net to, to, you know, get whatever input they can.
Standard template, that's, I say standard template, but DCA offers suggestions on updating land plans anyway about stakeholder involvement and certain stakeholders that have to be involved by nature of DCA rules. And then if there's anybody else outside that scope, then automatically they can be brought in. So any suggestions, any concerns, I'm sure we'd be glad to entertain any other stakeholders other than, DCA's list is pretty broad net, but any, any others you think of, certainly be able to include them.
Of course, not only the county and its departments, but, you know, I'm sure the city of Midway, the industrial authority, the landowners, everyone, you know, everyone, everyone who's living east of 95 have an interest, has an interest in this. So I'm sure, you know, the public as well will be invited to participate.
Required, public hearings are required as part of that update, so.
Joey, so you're saying with, if DCA, we would still have the opportunity, the board and, of course, Jeff's office? I mean, we, we learn by our mistakes, and we learn by watching other people's mistakes. So it wouldn't be wrong to say that there was, if there was an opportunity for us to use, let's say, the people in, in the Poole area to see where, what's happened, what could possibly happen, those other interchanges.
Yes, sir, it'd be great.
Okay. I mean, Mr. Chairman, I guess y'all talked about that and, and, or future growth in, in the Highway 17 side of the development, that would be, and this will cover that also, won't it?
Right, this study is just limited because, I guess, our most urgent need is.
I understand.
So right now, this study is limited to the east of 95. But you're right, there are other parts of Red County which are soon going to be experiencing these same demands. So I think similar studies are proposed in connection with those other development areas, so.
Mr. Chairman.
And hopefully, we can do it in connection with a comprehensive land use plan, but this one is simply a limited kind of update of the comprehensive plan.
Well, I don't want to insinuate that anybody down there's got more sense than we do. Just saying that if we, if, if, if we need to, you know, we can, we can reach out there and talk to them. I just think that's a, a good idea to.
Yes, sir.
I had one question, Mr. Chairman. I was just, once the study is completed, excuse me, in roughly 180 days, will it come back to the board?
Yes, ma'am.
For approval or just for information?
Approval, you'll have to actually move to amend, actually have to move to adopt the update to the plan. And then it'll get looked at again, actually, as part of the regular planning process.
Right.
Kind of an overview, so, yes, ma'am, it'll come back to you.
And then it will be included in our comprehensive?
That's correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
And believe you me, we've been talking to our neighbors.
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm.
Some of them may, has maybe.
I'm sure that y'all, and you're the chairman, we're gonna have to rely on you because you're the only one up here sitting on that board, but, you know, I, I just know that we have not made mistakes, but I think if we could have changed things, we'd have, you know, we might have moved forward with it.
Say hindsight.
Sounds to me like that's the first step in doing something right.
You do.
Let's do it. I mean, that's my feeling, not in a motion unless you want one. And that would be Commissioner Stevens.
Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt a resolution.
For the development zone?
For development zoning as presented.
Second.
Motion second, we adopt a resolution presented by attorney for development zone resolution, so that it can address our growing pains that we're having right now, allow us to better manage it and to get ahead of it, catch up with it, really.
Yes.
Catch up with it.
I, I would like to say that I would be willing to vote for this, but we also need to add this is a concept plan. This is not, this can change from what you're saying. I don't want the public to look at this and say, this is written in stone. I mean, we've already talked about it, so, I mean, Commissioner Stevens can change his motion, but it would be a concept plan to move forward with it.
Yes, I mean, they'll make, you know, the report will be presented to the board, and of course, it'll be part of our comprehensive plan, but it'll be largely left to you folks as to how you use that plan.
Right.
But based on what we know right now, Commissioner Walden, this is the best that we have to offer for.
Right now.
Addressing the issue.
Yep, our, our best effort to accommodate proposed development, allow that to continue, but still take responsible actions to ensure that future land use and development is appropriate.
All right, all in favor, by show of hands, please, to your post. All right, it's approved, sir.
And the, the next companion resolution is the one you just mentioned, Commissioner Walden. You know, we've all know, we know the impact that these developments are going to have on our transportation infrastructure, and to ensure that traffic is appropriately managed and the impact of these developments is mitigated, you know. Just on the east side of 95, it's anticipated that, you know, millions of dollars will be required to improve current transportation infrastructure. And, but to fund those improvements, we'll need the participation of the developers who are causing the impact. I think at your last meeting or the meeting before, we had a consultant who presented one way to accomplish this, was the creation of impact districts, impact fee districts or the imposition of impact fees. There are other ways to do it, but right now, the need is so urgent, we thought we needed to implement a mechanism where we could recapture some of those costs through developer participation. And it could take a variety of forms. Some developers may actually be building portions of the infrastructure that was, that's needed. But most of it, most likely, will be constructed by the county, and then we'll see contribution from developers who are causing the impact. And it's a very formulaic allocation of, of responsibilities. And that's what portion of this will be, is to authorize a, a traffic analysis. Our county engineer and consult, in consultation with others, will look at the proposed development, look at its impact, look at the cost. And for each project, we'll calculate, basically, their contribution, in large part based on a, a trip analysis. You know, if you have a distribution facility that employs 200 people and generates X number of deliveries a day, you'll have a very good idea what their burden or impact will be in relation to the other projects within this area. And we can fairly calculate a proportionate share of their cost of these infrastructure improvements. So that's our goal, is to provide an immediate mechanism. We can recapture some of these costs, but ensure that it's fair and reasonable and that everyone can buy into it. This is a, a mechanism that's used throughout the state of Georgia. Most recent, most nearby is Bryan County. You know, there, Bryan County is in a similar situation as ours. They've been faced with just accelerated development, mostly with residential, I mean, excuse me, industrial. And their infrastructure's overburdened. And so this was their approach, much like other jurisdictions, at least in the interim, until perhaps a more permanent solution can be imposed. But for now, the second resolution authorizes the county engineer to prepare a impact analysis to determine what a fair allocation of these costs would be throughout this area for all of the various projects. And then, at the time of rezoning, hopefully, most appropriately, but at other times as well, we'll enter into the agreements with developers where they'll agree to pay their fair share of these infrastructure costs. It's a tried and true mechanism. I don't anticipate any problems. I think most experienced developers are familiar with them and accustomed to paying them and expect to pay them. And so our experience, their experience in Liberty County should be no different from most other jurisdictions. But if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. But the resolution authorizes the impact analysis by the county engineer and then authorizes the development of a, of an agreement to recover these costs and then authorizes the chairman to enter into these agreements when they're ready with developers to recapture the cost.
Kelly.
Yes, sir.
So the, upon this impact analysis on their end results, those who are already in the impact zone will come out, how can I say, not participating, right? But the ones that are coming in will be the ones that help carry the load.
Yeah, there's only so much we can do.
Right.
Well, for now, and you know, there's only so much we can do right now.
Right.
You know, once you have already constructed your facility, your rights are vested in that facility, there's not a whole lot of government can do to come back and try and exact contributions from a, a developer. But there are other solutions that we can explore when we have time. You know, the impact fee is one, a special tax, that's tax district is another, or perhaps costs could be more, you know, spread out over a greater area or have a greater participation with these commercial and industrial users. But for now, this is the most immediate and best solution that we have to try and start recapturing some of those costs. It would be ideal if we could have done it five years ago, but I don't think anybody anticipated the, the kind of accelerated growth that we're experiencing now, this interchange.
So this will help the taxpayers of Liberty County?
Yes, that's the goal. The goal is to, you know, make, is to work with the developers, to have them pay their fair share of the impact which they are causing. You know, I don't think, it can't be denied that they're the ones who are creating this, this need. And so it's only fair that they participate in the cost of these improvements in a proportionate and fair manner.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Brown, let's say that upon this impact analysis, it comes out that we're right at the peak of doing so much improvement, safety-wise, roadway. And you only have two companies that wants to come in. That would not be enough funding to do what needs to be done. Where does that leave the county at right then?
So I think the county's got to make a determination in the coming, probably in the, in the next, you know, short while. I won't say necessarily a couple of months, but very few months, about when it wants to go ahead and try to fund those improvements. And then fund those out front, basically, maybe with some GDOT participation, but certainly fund those improvements, and this is how you repay those. If, if you had a chance to have some, as you pointed out, if it would come in early to help that process, it'd be good, but probably the county's going to have to go ahead and make those improvements. I know that's what they're doing at Belfast. We were having lunch with somebody today from Richmond Hill, who, basically, they're helping fund those improvements with Bryan County up front at Belfast.
I, I made a note, you know, with all the exponential growth, and you all have seen some of the presentation, this is coming like gangbusters, and what's not in the pipes, there are discussions about increased. Infrastructure follows the growth in most places. Very rarely you see the infrastructure in and then the, the growth come. So we're in that, in that pathway. And for Liberty County, Commissioner Stevens, you're right, all we have is splosh and T-splosh. And we're trying to protect your splosh dollars and try to protect y'all's T-splosh dollars to do as many of the local projects as you can, because you guys are still, I say you guys, we all still trying to pay their roads in some areas, so. Trying to stretch it, we've been, we've been very ambitious. We met with Senator Watson's office, met with DOT, met with Senator Warnock's office, and met with Buttercall's office, so we've been reaching out to everybody who we can reach out to.
Right.
You know, to, to, to get funding to help these projects. So we're looking with these funds that Attorney Davis is talking about to help us out, and maybe we won't have to, we may have to do some from our own, you know, funding, but we hope to use as much as the developers. And, and the developers, and correct me if I'm wrong, most of the, the newer developers are used to this. It's nothing foreign to them.
Yeah, I think most experienced and responsible developers are used to it and would, would not object to paying their fair share. Yes, sir.
And, and right now, it's more than two who are looking to come, so we should have some good level of participation, and put it that way.
Yes, sir.
Well, this is almost like a win-win for Liberty County and taxpayers.
For, for, for allowing you all to use your dollars wisely and spread the dollars around? Yes, sir, this is it, this is it. Otherwise, we'd be in that pipeline for a bunch of years.
Because, you know, like I've always said up here, the more that we add on, you have to add on, look at the public safety side of it, the law enforcement, EMS, Board of Education, fire service, image if it's industries down there that still adds on to Liberty County, and we need to start, let me say, not be ashamed anymore to go ask them for help. And that's what we need to step up to the plate and do.
And that's what this resolution will push. Yes, sir.
And then we'll come back with impact aid, you know, we took that home as homework. Put that on the agenda, I guess, Mr. Brown, mid-month. And that would add to the funds that we'll be able to get from some of these developers. Once again, have not reached any obstacles when it comes to that. Listen, the growth from the ports and, and the mega site is just pushing all of this, so most of them are wanting to find the area to locate, you know, so they can get up and running and be ready when the mega site, so, so I think it'll be a positive.
I think it's a, well, I've always said the easiest thing to do is nothing, and.
Right.
We've, we've never been able to get that piece of the pie, so we want to make sure we can move forward, I mean.
And it's working for others, so why can't it work for Liberty County?
Work for them. It's work for us.
Chairman, take the motion.
Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the, the development, Island's Highway Development resolution.
Yes, sir.
For the impact and allowing the county engineer to move forward with a, a impact analysis study.
Second.
All right, let me say, this, our discussion, I've been, here's what I've been presenting, y'all. I say, I've got grandmothers who live on the other side of 95, somewhere, who need to get to the grocery store. And I don't want grandma and them having to fight them big trucks every day trying to safely get to the IGA in a good way.
Right.
So we want to support the growth, there's a lot about that. But I also want to ensure that our citizens have.
Safe access.
Safe access to Highway, because, you know, the eighteen-wheelers, they, some of them on the road, on the road. So I told them, you need to give us some courtesy driving classes, you know, but really, we're trying to look out for those persons who just want to have a safe, be safely in and safely out, while we accommodate the growth at the interchange, so.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, all in favor of the motion? Show of hands. All righty.
All right.
Thank you, folks.
You did a marvelous job putting that together.
All right, mutual aid agreement, Mr. Chief Darby.
Oh, God.
Don't do him like that.
You're not looking for no money, is it?
Negative.
Was it just now?
Yeah, 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 no, no money, no money. Good evening, chairman, commissioners.
Good morning.
I am coming before you tonight in regards to the mutual aid agreement between Liberty County Government and the City of Richmond Hill Government. This mutual aid came about due to a rezoning annex that happened in South Bryan County area. This area was once in a mutual aid agreement that we currently have. This area was once in a mutual aid agreement that we currently have established at Bryan County, but this area is now covered by the City of Richmond Hill and the Richmond Hill Fire Department. So they would be our new immediate backup to our area.
So what happened to their county?
They did some development in the area when the eighty-two mile marker bridge went in. That was originally all unincorporated area of Bryan County, and now it has been rezoned to Richmond Hill.
Anx, yeah, Richmond Hill annexed all the way down.
So now there's a fire station a lot closer to us. We aren't terminating our agreement with Bryan County. It's always good to have more agreements than not enough. This is just closing that gap between us and Richmond Hill.
And their city has approved?
So it will be, their city actually petitioned us, their fire chief petitioned me for this mutual aid agreement.
Really?
For us to close the gap on it, and so I believe it'll be us signing, then going back to them for signature.
It goes back to them?
Yes.
So this would give us like double coverage in a way, can I say it that way, from Bryan County and Richmond Hill and mutual aid?
So, yes, ta, short answer is yes. We would have Richmond Hill first as a primary mutual aid, and then, should we need any additional resources on the north end of our county area, northeast, we would call Richmond Hill first, then Bryan County. Depending on the situation, we do rely heavily on Bryan County for marine rescues. Richmond Hill doesn't have that asset, Bryan County does, so it's really situational dependent, but primarily Richmond Hill first.
Are they planning on putting a station anywhere close to exit eighty-two?
Yes, sir, there currently is a station, it is up and running, they just got their certificate of compliance from the state a couple of months ago. It's actually located at the eighty-two mile marker, about a tenth of a mile west on Belfast Keller Road.
One last question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, ladder truck.
This mutual aid would, Richmond, City of Richmond Hill does have a ladder truck, so does Bryan County. This would allow us to have the utilization of their ladder truck based on a mutual aid request in the event that we need one, understanding that, that that's solely a request, it's going to be situation dependent if it's on a primary call for them or not, as well as this isn't getting us any credit for anything, it's truly to hear, help save lives and get a mission done, because it is outside of that five road miles, it's just merely to execute operational stuff.
How do you feel about it?
I think it's a good Band-Aid for now. I think it can get us through. I, I hate to use the word Band-Aid, but we have a lot of moving parts and fire services right now, and I understand that I'm not the only department under BOC. So Band-Aid, yes, it definitely to have a site in the future, which has been on y'all's desks for quite some time of an aerial device, but we've got some other things right now, being engines and tankers that we're needing also. So we're bleeding, but we're putting a Band-Aid on it and we're driving on.
Brian, is the, do they have a prescription service over there or is it county employees?
So the City of Richmond Hill is city employees, and then the county is, they're, they're very similar to us with the aspect that we aren't, we don't have EMS-based service in fire. So they have volunteers, part-time, full-time on the fire side, but Bryan County operates both fire and EMS under one department where us, it's myself and Crystal, we're, we're separate.
So there, at one time, they had this contract fire department?
No, sir, I think you might be thinking of South Side Fire. South Side might have been down in that area, which I do know, South Side, which is now Chatham Emergency Services. They were rebranded, they do provide backup to Bryan County for EMS.
On this side of the river, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all, I mean, I, I'm.
The only other thing I could think, you're, you may be thinking, Commissioner Walden, is they do have a, for their industrial, they do have a flat fee where they pay for a fire service protection, but all of their residents, it's in their tax bill.
That's Bryan County?
Yes, sir. We, we looked at that many years ago, it was not something that was feasible for us.
And it's still not feasible now?
I don't believe so, no, sir.
Okay. All right.
Chair and take a motion?
Yes, Ms. Chairman, I would make a motion, we approve the mutual aid agreement with Richmond Hill.
Second.
Motion second, we approve the mutual aid agreement presented between Liberty County and Richmond Hill, any further discussion? Have been none, all in favor, by show of hands, please.
Chairman, Commissioners, I appreciate it, also, I didn't cover, but this isn't just a one-way, this is also if the City of Richmond Hill calls and requests assistance for Liberty County to head up there as well.
I'm not, I don't believe in, in blind siding people.
Yes, sir.
I mean cautious even saying this, but I do need to hear, we would need to hear from you guys when it comes to all the growth that we're talking about at interchange, kind of give us an overview of what your plan would be to, to provide coverage for all that's coming up.
We will, and what we've talked about doing is really an update to what the county plan is overall, which will include that.
Mr. Brown, I've, we've, we've already been in conversations about the current fire plan and how the county has changed.
Okay, yes, bring us something back in. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, happy birthday, Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
You didn't tell me that.
Bye, bye. West Fifteenth Street renaming.
Yes, sir, we, I got a copy of this in your packet, we had a request from the Boys and Girls Clubs of America to consider, for the city and county, to consider renaming Fifteenth Street in honor of a former general that was out here, Secretary Lloyd Austin the Third, but that, that came from Mr. Alexander Walthier, the chairperson there, and I think as, as it mentions in here, and I hadn't missed that first time, Mr. Chairman, when we talked about it, but it does, Fifteenth Street, the annexation does weave kind of in and out in a couple of sections there, as y'all are aware, so it would take the city's acquiescence to, to, to be able to do that. One thought is, would be to name the road in his honor instead of actually changing the addresses, so much similar to what that you did with E.B. Cooper Highway and Earl Baggs Highway, in that way, the folks would not have to go through changing their addresses and everything for the residential areas and all that are out there, but just a thought to do that.
And who is this gentleman?
Secretary.
Secretary, Secretary of the Army, Lloyd Austin the Third.
Oh, okay, all right.
Secretary of Defense, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, Secretary of Defense, yeah. It'd been headed for Stewart some years ago, I remember.
Yeah, it does. Don't, don't Fifteenth Street extend into?
Into Fort Stewart.
It does, it does, so it would be really the naming of it, at least for y'all's concern, all those, the all those section.
On the county side. What were you saying about just?
In honor of?
In honor, just putting a sign in honor of rather than changing the name of the road or?
It would be much like you've done Earl Baggs Road and some of those others, or Earl Baggs Highway, sections like that, otherwise you'd need to go through and actually have all those address, sort of people would have to get the address changes to all their.
Actually, I think the only one I can recall that we changed the name on right now would be Freddie Walthow.
Another one?
Freddie Walthow would be the only one that I know that we actually changed the name on in a long time.
Well, we did Spencer Golden, then we changed.
Yeah, we changed the whole, yeah, it was casual.
We changed the whole street, it was, uh, Castle's Road.
Much is going on on Fifteenth Street, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it was three residents.
Yeah, yeah, there's, not many residents on there.
You got a school and condominium complexes and all out there that would need to change their name, but.
Well, I have spoken to Ms. Walthier a couple of times this week or in the last couple of weeks, but it was about the actual gala that she, that they're putting together. But on the other hand, with us being a military town, I don't, I, I, I would support it. And, but I have not heard from her, on the, in the letter, it says that they would come, where I said, you please bring greetings from the, but.
Yeah, she's getting ready for the.
For the banquet.
For the gala, but they wanted to present this to him when he comes.
Right. Do we have to get, I mean, I don't have a problem with, with going ahead, if we order a sign, they order a sign, the city order a sign, I'm, I'm not sure how, if you could take care of that for them. Yes, sir.
We good? Okay, all right.
Commissioner Thibodeau, you take a motion?
Yes, sir. Can we go ahead and approve it for tonight and then? Yes, sir.
Name of the honorary, in honor of.
In honor of, yes. Ms. Chairman, I make a motion that we go with the sign in honor of.
Lloyd Austin.
General and Secretary of Defense, Secretary of Defense Lloyd Austin the Third.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? We know it's going over to the city. All in favor?
This will not cause, Mr. Chairman, you said how many, there were very few residents on that road? But, but, but this would just be in honor of, not changing.
We'll have to worry about going through that.
Yes.
All in favor, as your hands. Motion passes, all right, we'll send it over to the city and see what they do. Mr. Mosley, it's coming. ARPA learning, academic learning grants.
This is Chair, members of the board, last year, when you all were developing or designing your ARPA budget, you allocated a hundred thousand dollars for educational assistance. We implemented the project, you guys approved the application back in June, we developed a flyer, put it on our website, Mr. Brown and I hosted a grant workshop and we had about seven individuals to attend, we explained the guidelines and encouraged people to apply, they were able to download applications off our website, and we established a date of August the first as a date for people to submit it. We had seven applications, a few turn on the other side, we had seven, and we went through them, vetted them thoroughly, we requested the applicants to submit us some additional information. Two were disqualified because they simply didn't meet the requirements of the grant. You have before you on the sheet, you have the five entities or nonprofits who requested the fund, the blue shows the original amount and the red is the areas or funding that we recommend. We were trying to put everybody in within the scope of the hundred thousand dollars. Our key was, we wanted to make sure because of ARPA guidelines, that whatever they requested followed the ARPA guidelines, and so that's why some, some areas are cut more than others. But those are, these are the entities and the red is what we are recommending for funding, or the amount recommended for funding.
The two who were disqualified, they were at the workshop and they heard the guidelines from you all?
Yes, sir.
Was it something they couldn't get in place in time to meet our deadline, that's, that's why they were?
Uh, one, one, one of the recipients, because Mr. Brown talked specifically to them and they shared that it's simply what they were proposing just did not fit, uh, did not meet the guidelines, it was not in the requirement, because in this particular application, we were, we, we went through it a lot in terms of researching and we wanted to make sure that we, because ultimately, the county is going to be on the hook for, for those funds, so we wanted to make sure that those applicants abide by the rules and regulations as much as possible.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, this is, here's.
Yes, Ms. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the ARPA funds for these, what, five that are listed?
Is there a second to that motion?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion second, we approve the, this as distributed to us for these persons for funds for educational opportunities for, basically for young people. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, there's one question, is, would Joseph be kind of the, you'd be looking after this? I mean, how, how does this work with ARPA funds? I, I'm, I know we've passed it out, but how does this work as far as, will you be the police over the money, that's what I'm asking?
Yes, sir.
I mean, who are we gonna have to look for to say, this man here is in charge of doing it? I mean, I, I just need to know, because I, I know we've passed out a lot of ARPA money and some is to department heads, some of them's to constitutional officers, and, I mean, can you know right now who's got what? You probably can, but with this right here, we need to have somebody that, I mean, what's your suggestion of, that's?
You want to cover, or, yeah, so, so in the first round that you gave out to, to the nonprofit agencies, they're, they're required to submit a final report to us to show the exact expenditure of those funds, and we were very detailed to say how they could use them, so that's going to monitor that this way. These funds are going to be given out fifty percent now, fifty percent upon successful completion. Important in this to note that what you got to do in those ARPA funds is promote, you got to show a progression, educational assistance, so these agencies, and that's why a couple of others couldn't qualify, because what they proposed wasn't along this line at all, they're going to have to pre-test by using a test standard when they come in, this is national, they're going to have to do a middle test during middle part of their programs to show progression or decline, but then the third part, where they get their last sum, is to show that they've complied with all the guidelines, submit a final report, and submit the final test, so we're going to get all three test results, so I feel real good that.
So we can use this money then, Mr. Chairman, for the, for the new project in Midway? I mean, in Riceburg?
No.
Oh, no, no, not.
Okay, can you use it for Coastal Pines or Foothills for these students that are, you know, after schools, what I'm asking, you've got students that are going after cla, you know, after their high school, they're showing up at the old bacon primary, and I believe they call it Coastal Pines? Would, would those individuals be able to apply for it, is this got to be a, it's got to be a?
I think it has to be independent of the school system.
It is.
Yeah.
Well, now this, Foothills is independent of a, of a high school or something, but I think it's kind of like a, I don't know what, you remember they had it on Fort Stewart at one time, the youth challenge? These are other, this is another thing, that's why it was.
See, they'll be getting federal funding, wouldn't they?
They should.
I guess these are too, huh?
These would, these are too, they're required to submit some of those things in there.
Well, my thing is.
We could certainly, we could certainly try and see.
I mean, you, you know, you and Kim and Joseph and, and I'm sure y'all have, I'm somebody that can count the peas, we want to make sure the money's, uh, somebody to follow up on it, I mean, I, I know that there's guidelines that's.
And I kind of see these as local providers having to work off grants and pennies here and pennies there as versus someone getting federal funds.
Well, and when I look for that, Mr. Chairman, I try to pinpoint where that is at in Hinesville or Liberty County, and that's why I said if it can't be used in Riceburg, where are we going to be, where else do we have? I mean, I know there was a little place there in Midway on the left that used to be the old drugstore.
Right, it's a daycare.
It's a daycare.
And I don't, I'm just asking a question, I don't know, I'm just, want to make sure that we, somebody to monitor the bank, that's all I'm, and if y'all satisfied with it, Joseph, you can handle it, Joey?
Strict requirement, that's what's, that's why some people back off.
I just don't want it to be a burden, you know, I know that you're going to be shorthanded here before long, so.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Brown, Mosley.
Yes, sir.
So you're saying the operation in Riceburg could not have applied for this?
I don't believe so, no, sir, and we can double check and find out, but they have an existing education program that's ongoing, these, these were supposed to be areas that suffered loss of learning during the COVID, but they never quit down there, so I'm, I'm not sure they would, I mean, we can certainly explore.
How about, if you don't mind, just.
Sure, sure.
And I would think that anybody who could have applied would have applied.
Yes, sir, I made an effort, tried to get the word out.
All right. Where are we?
We had a motion.
Motion second.
All in favor?
I'm, I'm in favor.
It's all good.
Sorry, I'm just getting here.
Thank you for making the sacrifice, I heard you.
Appreciate the money, Gary.
Heard you out of, outside, outside of the county.
I got a little bit of yours this time, Gary.
Wow, I, I would have gave it to you, so you got it while I wasn't here.
Look at Austin Sales Tax.
Yes, sir, as, as the board knows, we started meetings actually about three months ago with the cities as required under the new sales tax distribution certificate form that followed the census, and so what you have before you. And so what you have before you is the new certificate of distribution recommended from the governing bodies. All the governing bodies are considering this during the month of September so that we can each sign the certificate and get it to Department of Revenue and be prepared to answer any questions. Our percentage, I think, and the chairman certainly, I know we won't talk about this for a minute, but as usual, meeting with the cities was very cordial in doing that, very eager to work with us in what we had to do. So even though most of the balance of this is looked upon as coming from the census numbers, our census percentage of the county is actually less than 40.564. But in looking at what the county does for them, the cities and the city of Hinesville particularly, gave up percentages as it relates to census so that the county could be made whole. And so our percentage actually did not decline from last time. So that's good news. They actually gave up so that we could retain almost four more percent on our percentages, which is good. So very cordial, very good professional type of approach to everything. And while the cities, some of the cities, all the cities, except for one, will lose a little bit of percentage, the growth in sales tax alone, I think, will make that up for them. So the percentage that Hinesville gave actually had a little bit too in it for the smaller cities that helped that loss not be as great, which is really good. Recommendation from that body is to approve that, have all the bodies approve it.
So we're not considering Allen Hurst and Gum Branch?
No, so they don't qualify, because they don't offer three of the basic five services to qualify. So they're excluded from the sales tax, this local option sales tax.
But at one time, we said that we were going to help them if they need a little help.
Yes.
That's right.
Is that correct?
That's right. They just don't get any of these proceeds.
Right, I understand that part.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
I think we've been kind of doing that and trying to do that.
Yeah, we have been. I know Mr. Gilder and I have looked at some things in that area when we wasn't down on the first district, but.
I'll tell you all what.
We haven't been down there in a while.
I wish I was living down there just nothing to do.
Yes, sir, I will.
Make a motion that we move forward with it.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the, get my wording right, the loss option sales tax distribution certificates presented by county administrator. Any further discussion? All in favor, that's your hands, please. All right, sir. Funding requests from Diversity Health Center.
Yes, sir. I think you also have a letter in there, actually an email from Ms. Heath, the chief executive of Allford's Diversity Health Center. As you know, they're trying to do an addition over there and I'm sure Commissioner Thref can address this even further. They have about a $300,000 need on the project for equipment and/or assistance with construction. And they're asking the board commissioners to consider trying to help them in some way. I would tell you that your ARPA funds would qualify for that, much like it's qualifying for health department. You've already done some things with ARPA. In fact, this was a perfect example. You dispersed 91,000 out of 100, so there's actually about 9,000 left there. But in looking at some disbursements you've already made in your original budget, there's probably right at $50,000 that could be used for this purpose. And we would do some budget amendments in ARPA to shift some of those leftover monies into an account, into a medical expense account to do that if the board wishes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I can add to that. Ms. Heath did apply for the grant in which, for a million dollars, and we did get that, you know, it's been a couple of years. But now that, you know, COVID's let up and the prices are escalating a little bit, it's going to cost us a little bit more than what we had budgeted for. So I would ask if the board would approve maybe at least 30,000 out of the 50 that we could give to diversity out of the ARPA funds, if that could be moved. And we are growing and our clientele over there is just, is really booming also. So doing a lot of good things for the people of Liberty County.
I like it. It touches the whole county.
Yes, sir.
It is. As y'all know, it diverts emergency room use. I think you were saying it one time before, Ms. Chairman, too, the amount of people that have that as a primary facility. Because they do accept health insurance there too, so there's a large number that go there.
Health insurance, Medicare, Medicaid.
How much is in there now?
A little over 50,000 in the funded, the ARPA fund. So we were requesting 30.
Is that a motion or a question?
I would make a motion that we move the funds, ARPA funds, for 30,000 for Diversity Health Center for medical needs of the county.
Second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, that's your hands, please.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, those who are helping us.
We will need to revisit an agreement with Diversity Center nonprofit for services provided. I've made a note to go back and look at that original agreement we had once before. Just, I get with the county attorney to update that, so in order to make that transaction.
Thank you.
Minister reports, Splash Seven.
I'll be real quick, Mr. Chairman. Y'all are aware, we're kicking and running with Splash Seven. The eggs in issue breakfast is the official kickoff is September 13th. This past week, we completed work on the video that will be shown and be used, that you can take to churches, put on a thumb drive, very informational. So we're wrapping that up this week in anticipation of 13th. We've got a lot of speaking engagements, the clubs that are out there. One thing that we did not set a date on, and I want to ask Commissioner Stevens about this. We normally do a couple of town halls, one on the east end to do that and then one primarily in the city of Hinesville. And I wanted to see Commissioner Stevens if maybe the 26th might work. I was trying to pick a time when you and Commissioner Jones were available. And right now, he's showing on the schedule that he's available and off. I know he's got some things going on, but. And then I'll have to check the east end complex.
You said the 26th?
Yes, sir. Either the 26th, primarily the 26th.
That's, it looks good with me. Wait a minute, oh, September, right?
Yes, sir, September.
I'm in October. I didn't jump them. 26, that's on the money, looks good with me if it's okay with him.
All right, I'll try the 26th and we'll check his calendar and I'll check the east end center. And then if something is amiss that's in the way there, we'll reset.
Do you have a second date or you want to wait?
I don't, because in looking at his calendar, the only other day I see, it might be the 20th, which is a Tuesday. That's the day we were talking about earlier. We got something that morning, something at lunch. I got a presentation at lunch. But let's, if we can try the 26th, let's see if we can pull that off. Monday's probably available.
We want to do one on that. And I remember one time, last time, we did one, we actually did two because of size.
Yeah.
But we did one in Riceburg.
I know. The only problem is early voting starts pretty early in October with some holidays that come in there. And I've got to schedule one in the city of Hinesville also. Let me talk with them about which date it could be that we may could squeeze another one in.
Okay.
Somewhere, if you wanted to. We didn't have that good of attendance on the second one. The one that brought the best attendance, as you know, was at the complex.
Yeah, the one in District One, the one that always come to me.
We sent them out of District Six down.
But I'll communicate with you.
And then let us know when the one for Hines falls on a basis.
Yes, ma'am, I will. The other thing is, just a quick update on your construction projects. It's wet. So there's not a lot of work that's going on. They continue to work the site a little bit at the fire station. It's okay. The footer inspections are coming good there. The EMS site got problems with one footer that just won't dry out. And so we may have to pull a sock drain or something. We just need some dry weather on our construction projects. Mr. McCall is trying to finish up the construction drawings for the road department, which, once he finishes those, we'll put those in the back lot we normally do and y'all can all come take a look at those and give any comments you may have. And we're rapidly moving towards closing on the piece of land with EMC on the survey for that extra land for the road department. So it's all going along good. We finished the hangar project, I think we mentioned that last time, and all of them are occupied and rented already. And we already have a new waiting list. So that's a great problem to have. And other than executive session for land acquisition, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. Brown, see if you can get me a good report on the light drainage project. Sunberry off of Trade Hill Road.
Oh, absolutely.
As my understanding, nothing has really been done down there as of yet.
Yes, sir. I know they were waiting.
Back to the rainy season.
They were waiting on those storm drains, so I'll check on that. Yes, sir.
What about the Miller Park? Did you mention anything about?
Miller Park, they, you know, as you know, they moved all the poles. We got some Comcast lines that are in the way. They've been notified again about those. But they have started putting some underground material in, my understanding is.
Okay.
Yeah, Joey, I talked to Joey today, Ms. Chairman, and I wanted to wait till after the holidays, Labor Day, that Commissioner Stevens and Walden and myself get together with Joey to just kind of talk about intergovernmental agreement.
Yes.
And if we can, the, I don't, this week here, I know I talked to Joey. He's, you know, Friday, we can't do it Friday, but what's y'all's schedule like, Marion, you and Eddie, for next week, next Monday?
I'm booked.
You're booked. Next Monday is the 12th. You'll be back, Joey?
Yes, sir.
What you think, Marion?
What time? Like early?
Early? Right after you buy us breakfast.
What was that?
Right after you buy us breakfast.
We'll do a late one.
Monday, Monday about nine, right here?
Four, five, nine, I think that'd work.
Okay, we'll do that.
I'll send an invite.
Yeah, Monday.
I'll send an invite on.
And you know, we're talking, we won't have a call, Ms. Chairman, we, you know, once we get it going, then we'll.
Bring it back.
On what we're doing.
Thank you.
And the reason, I think, in the email, the smaller cities, the larger smaller cities, you know, we're the three commissioners that.
Represent those.
That have those. I mean, but even though Allen Hurst is one of mine and Gum Branch is Connors, but Midway and Riceburg and then Flemington.
And Walthleville.
Yeah, and Walthleville.
I've got all three of them. Part of it.
Another thing, Mr. Chairman, if I can just take a moment, I have talked with Joey and tried to talk to Paul Hawkins the other day when we had the business after hours. But they're having some growing pains like everybody in Flemington with road realignment behind the parkers. The supposedly, the new Publix that'll be coming in, which will be a traffic light there going to Wallace Martin Road. And then there'll be some stuff that's paid for by the city. And then there's going to be some shortfall. I know I have money in my, do you have a dollar amount? I don't want to give them, I don't want to give them everything I got because there's things I want to do here. But there's a possibility that I can give them some money to try to help make this thing work. I just need y'all's blessings. But now I do want to say that the stipulation is going to be the majority of the city council agrees on this because there's one road that's there, which is Baker Beals Road, that is the last dirt road that Clinton's got to grade coming from Midway. And I've tried my best to identify those dirt roads that's in the new area there that I've just inherited to keep that grader from having to come any further past, you know, the railroad track. Now, I know there's some other places down in there they got to go, but I say if we can pave them, then every five years, we can put a yellow line or a white line on it. So that's going to be the project, US 84 realignment, US 84 Wallace Martin Road and Baker Beals Lane. And I know I can't fund it all and they know I can't fund it all, but I want to be able to put a dollar amount in there that, you know, some money, maybe, I don't know what's there, but I'd like to try to give them somewhere between $600,000, $700,000 that'll help them get, you know, at least get a project to go. I'm really shocked that the, you know, of course, pavement has gone up, but just for a short road, it looks to me like it's about as much as to do a long one, so. It's one of y'all's blessings. Joey will be communicating with whoever and before it all goes down, we'll again look at it because it is in, part of it is in their own city. But we also have the county on one side and then the city of Hinesville is sandwiched in between it. I think actually at the back gate, that is the city of Hinesville. I'm not positive. But the back gate where the cemetery is at, I think part of that's the city. Yeah, so you got to be real careful where you, where you're at there, so. But I just needed, you know, to try to help them and I told them I would, but I definitely need you folks to work with me on it. And that's all I've got. It's.
Mr. Chair.
You're bound.
One other thing before we go in is, Mr. Brown and Mr. Mosley, appreciate y'all working on the car lot. Car lot on Baking Town Road, but we need to, any way that we can expedite some of that stuff down there because it looks horrible.
What are you talking about?
We're talking about shop.
We got some enterprise cars down there and we got some cars, vehicles that's not enterprise. It looks terrible. It looks almost like coastal yard out there on 84.
Some of that stuff will be headed there probably because.
Joey, is there anybody in that old EMS area now where the old trailer's at?
Old trailer?
There on the old double wide trailer right there or building, you know, where the EMS used to be at on Baking Town Road? Right before you get to Clint's office.
Well, there's, it's actually that old voting precinct. That's where they still. They're still in there, EMS.
And the old voting.
Right, EMS is. That just looked like they may be able to park some stuff around it. I mean, I think it's going to have to be drugs around there.
It is. It needs to be.
Work in progress, all right. I hope it goes along. Chairman, a motion to go in executive session.
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
To discuss land acquisition.